I call to order the special meeting of Latrobe City Council on October 27, 2014. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're all comments back?
Mr. Givern Angelo? Mrs. Smith? Here. Mrs. Colville-Bravner? Mr. Scopora?
Here.
Mr. Boldmarie?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mayor Wolford?
Here.
Five thousand.
At this time, we have our citizens' requests. If anyone would like to say anything, please go to the microphone. Please go to the microphone and state your name and address, please. And please limit your comments to three to five minutes. Thank you.
I'm Harry Albert on Main Street in Latrobe. I'm here to commend the city on a program that you have initiated. It was reported in the bulletin of the electronics recycling program. This is one of those rare things when a government organization and NGO, Cleanways, are cooperating with each other for the benefit of both, in fact, the benefit of the community, at no cost to the people in the community and only very minimal cost to the city. As I say, it's one of these things that, well, electronics accumulate in our junk drawers at home with telephones and small televisions and printers and all that sort of thing. And they're not enough to justify a run up to Greensburg to get rid of a telephone. So they accumulate. Or they get thrown away in places where they ought not to be because they're toxic materials and undeserved and stuff like those. But Cleanways can handle that. And Joe tells me when they did one of these some months ago, they got 38,000 pounds. He said the bulletin was wrong there. They only had 27,000 pounds. And as I say, it's one of these things that's a win-win for everybody. And we don't always get that sort of thing. It's good for the community, for safely and conveniently getting rid of electronics, which are a damnable nuisance to most people because it's hard to dispose of them. There are very many places that want to take electronics and their hours are often inconvenient and very short. Whereas here, it's going to be done at the parking lot by the stadium. Everybody can get to lots of room for the trucks to perform. It's good for the transfer station because they only have to make one bulk load instead of back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, taking them to the same place anyway for the recycling center because they can handle things in bulk rather than bits and pieces for the whole region. Because I say it's open to the entire region, not just citizens of Latrobe, but any other place around. It's good for the environment because they're safely getting rid of all the things that aren't really particularly good for the environment. They have a lot of sneaky things in those that if they end up in landfills or somewhere where they don't be, not good. And certainly for the city of Latrobe, it's commendable, this part of this sort of thing. There may be other things, other places that do best for free for their communities, but I'm not aware of any. And I think this is a very commendable feather in your cap for initiating and implementing and carrying through something like that. It is coming up on the first of November for Saturday, and that's coming up fairly soon. It was published in the paper a week or so ago. But if the bulletin could see its way to have another article of some sort a couple of days in advance to give people with their heads in their hands scouring their basements, closets and so forth, to have things ready and get rid of it. Good job, Latrobe.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. We don't awful him here. Get commended on him much, so we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Joe, you announced, maybe Mr. Albert did while I was chatting here. Where is the, where is Saturday going to occur? Where is the?
Right in the stadium parking lot. I asked that everybody enter by way of Chestnut Street, and then we can exit everybody on Irving Avenue, which should even ease the congestion.
And I would add, Mr. Albert, that the gentleman sitting beside you is the one that really got this thing rolling. So, Joe, nice work.
I know that, too. Joe, Joe, what time of the day?
Eight to noon.
Any other comments by the citizens? Any other citizens' request?
Ron Lambert, Spring Street, Latrobe. I'd just like to mention that council in the near future should look at controlled smoking in the parks. The city of Greensburg already did it, and they're having a lot of success with it.
Thank you.
I think it really helped Latrobe in keeping it clean and less chance of anything catching on fire because there's really no money involved except for the cost of the trash can because the foundation center will take care of the fences and the stone and recreation will do the old fencing. And if we pick out certain areas to put spoken areas in there, I think it'd be really good for the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. I couldn't agree with you more. We need to do something with that. Any other citizens' request, comments at this time before we get to the agenda?
Yeah, I have something.
Yes, sir.
Just give me one second.
Sure. I love the baby. Aw.
He's got his big sister here.
I know.
My name's Mike Rager. I'm a real estate agent with Keller Williams Realty. And I live in Latrobe. I live on Dawn Street. And I have a client right now who has some property for sale. It's down by the Rolling Rock Brewery down there on Oak Street. And, you know, I have some pictures, the printout input statement here. I don't know if it's something that the city of Latrobe would be interested in for any kind of warehousing or anything like that, but I just wanted to make you guys aware of it. And if I could just leave this here?
Sure. You want to give it to Wayne, our city manager there?
Sure.
Thank you. Any other citizens' request, comments? Mr. Kelly, you can begin with the two items on the agenda.
Certainly, Madam Mayor. The first item is a motion only. I'll read the motion and offer a brief explanation. The motion reads, "I move we authorize the solicitor to file an appeal from the administrative order of the Department of Environmental Protection dated October 2, 2014." The reason I ask for that this evening is that we have a 30-day timeframe, and our next meeting would be beyond that. The city, as well as the Latrobe Municipal Authority, Dairy Township, DTMA, Uniti Township and UTMA, all received this administrative order. Deals with the Act 537 update plan, which we have been involved in for the past several years. Suffice it to say, in February, we thought we had an agreement. One of the participants decided to try to add things to that agreement, which the department felt were extraneous and should not be added. As a result, they did not sign off. The department then, Department of Environmental Protection, issued an order which basically says we have 120 days to come to an amicable, agreed-upon plan. We had a meeting and discussed this with the Latrobe Municipal Authority. Their belief has his mind, because I attended that meeting on the 14th of February, is that we do have an agreement, not might have an agreement, we do have one. It was oral, it was not reduced to writing. To make a long story short, we are filing, we being the city, I would hope, and the Latrobe Municipal Authority are filing an appeal to the Environmental Protection Board disputing that particular paragraph in the order and eventually asking the board to rule that there is, in fact, an agreement, and let's move on. So the motion, as I indicated, authorized me to file that appeal. And I do want to have it in by the end of this week.
May I have a motion to authorize the solicitor to file the appeal?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second, please?
I have a second.
Any questions or discussions? I have a couple of comments. First of all, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Scopora and I attended the LMA meeting last Tuesday. And I will tell you on my part, it was an educational experience. LMA spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. We have no idea exactly how much Uniti Township and UTMA have spent just fighting over a plan that has been approved by DEP, Dairy Township, Dairy Municipal Authority, LMA and Latrobe. And so it's, I encourage all of you to read up on it and ask questions because it is going, you know, if we don't reach an agreement, we don't know what could happen next. Mike, did you want to add anything?
Just that, as you said, it was an eye-opening experience, or eye-opening meeting.
Frustration.
Yeah, it's frustrating, but very eye-opening to hear, as Mr. Kelly described, there was a meeting February 14th.
Nineteenth.
February in, at the airport. And there was an agreement. And most of the entities in the room, all the entities in the room, said there was an agreement. Now one entity claims there wasn't an agreement. And the DEP, what we're appealing is that DEP says there was no agreement when these other entities all believe they had an agreement. So we're appealing their order that there is no agreement.
And I would just want to add, you know, I want to commend Dr. Cook, who's the chairman of the LMA, as well as that board, who has spent a lot of time and energy and effort trying to come to resolution and resolve this for their customers and for all the communities involved. So they've worked really hard at this. And you talk about frustrated. There was so much frustration in that room that night. It was, it was really something.
There was, but there was still so much professionalism among them. Amidst all this frustration, I was surprised to see all that professionalism still come out of all those individuals in the room.
Any other comments? Ms. Buck? No motion, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make sure that I get a copy to put in all council members' mailboxes to be appealed. Madam Mayor, members of council, there is one other item on the agenda. It is a resolution, and I will highlight it. It's in time of authorizing the city manager to apply for a community development block grant allocation for repaving of certain streets in the city, whereas the CDBG grant program has allocated funds for the fiscal year 2015, whereas the city desires to seek a portion of these funds to be allocated, to be utilized for the 2015 street paving project for certain streets in the city. Now therefore, it be resolved, Section 1, Council of Latrobe hereby authorizes the city manager or is designated to prepare and submit an application to the Westmoreland County Planning Department to utilize the 2015 community development block grant allocation for the paving of certain streets in the city. In Section 2, the mayor, city manager or is designated, the secretary and any other proper city officer are authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect receipt of that portion of the city's allocation for the oh-described project and to carry into effect this resolution. Resolved in council this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? This is a resolution, right?
Yeah.
Ms. Buck?
It's a resolution, 2014-58. Mr. Boldmarie?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Are there any unfinished business items? Any new business? Before we adjourn the meet, Joe, did you have something?
I have a couple hours.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
First of all, the NCR sign that you had passed, it is up, and we got some favorable comments already, the fact that we extended that time. So that was a good move by council. The new truck we had ordered, the new roll-off truck, it did come in and it did go back. The waste system on it was not to our satisfaction, to what we had actually bid. We went over, the city manager and I went over, and we discussed it and went back to Ohio to be done the way we expected to be done. So it's prolonging it, but we wanted to make sure for that kind of money, we're getting what we want, you know, that somebody's given us. The last meeting I did not attend, but I understand there was a complaint on Northview. Since then, I've visited that site many times, different times throughout today and different days. And the most vehicles I found on Northview was two vehicles. I talked to a neighbor on Northview and asked if they thought there was a parking problem there, and they said there hasn't been in years since the hospital has downsized. I talked to the hospital, and they assured me that every employee there has an on-street, off-street parking place and does not park on. That same complainant also complained about a sinkhole, which we had it camered by the water company. Found out that we couldn't find a problem with them, so we went ahead and repaired that same sinkhole. So that's all I can find on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I just wanted to make one comment. I see that Chief Brazilli's not here today, but I just wanted to thank the firemen for their dedication again and for making the Halloween a safe and fun day for the kids. I went down for the parade and for the judging, and I was really impressed with some of the, some of the creativity is just amazing. I think you saw in the bulletin today, the Pac-Man family. And there was just some really, really cool things, and a lot of, a lot of kids having a lot of fun. So I want to thank the Lions Club Commercial National Bank, who funds that, as well as the Latrobe Volunteer Fire Department. And I'm also glad that we had it this weekend because it's going to snow on Friday, Halloween. So we, we had a beautiful day for that, so. And if there's any other, any other questions before I adjourn the meeting and we move on to the agenda items for next month? We need to adjourn. Okay, Wayne, you're up.
All right, first on the agenda is we're asking for permission to demolish a garage at 8.7 Warner. Ann's, Ann and the gentleman are fully aware of, they've given the appropriate notices a number of times with no response, and they're at the point now where they're going to move forward and try to promote it.
In my discussions just before the meeting with Mr. Kelly, I think we're going to use this time between now and the meeting, a November meeting when we vote on this, to try a couple of different avenues. We just found out some people that know some people, and we're going to try a couple more avenues to contact her. And then this will be on the agenda for the November, whatever, 10th, 11th?
Somewhere in there.
Whenever it is.
But there will, there will be a resolution to that effect.
Okay.
All right, next, I'm going to ask the gentleman from the DM to step out of the room for a minute. Joe, would you take him down to the green room?
To which room?
The green room.
Circling.
And then Constellation.
And then come back, is what you're doing.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back, get you.
No, Joe, come back. Don't hang out down there with those guys. You come back.
Look.
I knew it, I knew it. That's why I said you had to come back.
I actually have five blocks. And then keeping an eye on time.
Yeah, we're going to hold you to your 15 minutes, okay?
15 minutes, okay. Five after, somebody stop me. There you go. And I have this on screen here where we can take a look at it, too. But I appreciate, I appreciate your time. As Wayne said, my name is Joe Houdak. I'm the business development manager.
I'm sorry, your first name, sir?
Joe.
Joe.
Yep, Joe Houdak. I'm the business development manager for Constellation Energy in the Pittsburgh market. Slot in here. And what I'd like to do, first of all, thanks for giving us the opportunity, or giving me the opportunity here to talk with you guys. What I want to do over the next 15 minutes is just a little, explain a little bit about who Constellation is, talk a little bit about what projects we've done locally, and then more, most importantly, talk about the city and how this project or this potential project could be a benefit to you guys. Okay? So what we're talking about, you guys can look at it, too. What we're talking about here is the Pennsylvania State Energy Legislation. It's called PA Act 39, okay? There's no funding associated with the legislation. Basically, it's just a financing tool that allows state entities, including cities and municipalities, to enter into long-term agreements to basically finance energy improvements. Okay? That's oiling it all down. My company does business in that realm. I mean, we work with school districts, we work with cities, we work with state agencies, all different types of entities. But there's a couple of slides in there on who Constellation is. I'm not going to go through all that. The main point I want to relieve you with on Constellation is we're an energy company. That's all we do, okay? We sell power in the deregulated market. We sell gas in the deregulated market. We sell demand response. We look at energy efficiency projects. We do renewables. So it's all about energy and energy-related products. By the way, Wayne, for the contract for power, we actually are providing you a price for that, too. You guys are currently on, I believe, with First Energy right now. For your two street lighting accounts, you guys are on at 5.4. We can bring that down to 4.7. And on the remainder of the accounts, you guys are on at 5.7. We can bring that down to 5.4. This is the power commodity. You can buy your power separately to lower your electric bills. We can talk, meet with Wayne separately to talk about it, but what I want to do, giving that to him, is to show you that it's all about energy. That's all we do. And we are a large company. We can back up the guarantee, no problem. We've done numerous of these projects. If you jump ahead to our completed energy projects, what I urge you guys to do when I talk to different customers, I say, "Look at our references. Look at who we've done." Customers we've done in this area, city of Greensburg, just met with Sue Trout about a month and a half ago where we presented our measurement and verification report to basically prove out the savings that we put in the proposal that shows like what we are going to do. We met with her to actually put that report together and show her that those savings are indeed there. We completed that project. We did a project with Westmoreland County, the actual county itself down at the county office building. Municipal Authority of Westmoreland County, we're currently doing a $9 million project with them. Who else do I have on this list that's local? Westmoreland County Housing Authority, we've done different phases for them, different projects. Kennametal, a private business, we've done a project with up here. But it's all about energy and energy-related services. These guys used state legislation, all except Kennametal because they're private. But the public entities, they utilize the state energy legislation to basically finance energy improvements without having to use capital dollars. But all of them are very good references. It's all about energy. Okay? So what's an ESCO? What is my company? My division of Constellation, we basically do three things that are important to entities like you guys. If we're selected, we come in and we do an engineering study, a full study, to figure out exactly what type of improvements are needed and what the savings are. Like looking at the lighting in here, looking at the, I don't know if I'm going to point the chiller and the cooling tower that need to be replaced, the heating system, the control system. We'll do a full analysis to not only give you the costs, but to give you real savings, too, to show you exactly what the paybacks are. So as a company, we'll do the engineering. When the project goes into construction, instead of Latrobe having to bid out the different pieces and portions of that, by selecting an ESCO, an energy services company, we act on behalf of the city. So if we're doing electrical work, if we're doing chillers and boilers, mechanical work, we'll actually hire the subcontractors and we'll work as a general contractor to basically manage all those disciplines to implement the project. That's what we've done for Westmoreland County, for the city of Greensburg and for the other entities. So once an entity selects an ESCO, they don't have to go out for separate bids for every different part of the project. That's all handled by the ESCO. We would do that on your behalf. Okay? And then the last part is when you get after construction, like we are for Greensburg and one of those other entities, we basically will do a performance measurement and verification analysis to figure out, make sure that the savings are indeed there, to pay for the overall improvement. Okay? Those savings, by the way, are guaranteed by the ESCO. We have to guarantee the savings so that you guys can pay off the debt service for the improvements that are being made.
Just some of those sounds too good to be true.
I hear that a lot. I hear that a lot. There's, again, a lot of people.
There's got to be it. There's got to be a catch.
A lot of people will ask, "Is the state funding this?" No, I want to mislead. The state does not.
So how do you make your money?
We make our money as a percentage on top of the hard costs for each measure we put in. So if we're replacing that chiller and the cooling tower, we're going to get a price for labor and for material. We're going to go to local contractors. If we can't get them in the city, we'll go to the county and we'll get pricing. We usually try to get three bids for every piece of equipment or every service that we put in. But we make our money as a percentage on top of those hard costs.
So then you tell us that if you're going to save on these round numbers, we're going to save $20,000 in energy costs this year. We could use that $20,000 as equity to pay for an energy improvement.
And I'm jumping ahead to slide number nine. These aren't exact numbers, but these are ones that I, I had met with Alex in the past night, and met with Jared when he was, is Jared still here, buddy?
He's not, no.
Okay, I didn't know if he was or not, but.
Yeah, he had a two-year, no. He's still involved working for the city, but not, not for the city, for private entity care.
But we met with them and basically tried to talk to them about like what the utilities spend is, but you're exactly right, Mike, when you talked about it, whatever your spend is, I mean, and these are in dollars, but we know exactly what the kilowatt hour usage is, what the MCF usage and what the gallons are. The savings, I just put 30% over there. It usually ranges from 20, you know, take that back, from 15 to a thought as much as 40%, depending on if you have older systems in the buildings or not. But yes, the dollars that are saved, it's based on kilowatt reduction multiplied by your rate, or MCF reduction multiplied by your rate. So that savings, whatever that is up here on the electric, if you go to the next page, that's saying roughly that there could be $45,000 or so in energy savings that could be attained by the city. Okay? And then there's, there's three pools of savings that the, that the state legislature allows. There's energy savings, which is the reduction in usage. There's O and M savings. No manpower, just basically maintenance costs. If you guys are spending money on a service contract, if you're spending money on buying lamps and bales, older technologies, by putting everything in new, you're going to have a warranty, so that those maintenance costs go away. So there's savings that could be allotted there. And the last pool of savings is called avoided capital costs. So if you know you're going to, you guys had some studies done in the past. I think Hype did a lighting audit, showed you what you can save there. And I believe the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission also did a study. And I believe the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission also did a study. The studies are great, I mean, they tell you what you guys need to get done, but they don't give you a way to pay for it. This legislation gives you a way potentially to pay for it, especially if you don't have the capital money. But, that last point on the avoided capital cost, if you know that chiller and cooling tower could cost, let's just say, two-hundred thousand dollars. I don't know if that's a bond or not, but say it's gonna cost two-hundred thousand. Is it easier for the city to come up with that money all at once? Or is it easier to budget an amount over fifteen years, or even over twenty years? Ten thousand a year, over twenty years? I mean, so there are different ways that the legislation could be used. The main point of the legislation and using this, the reason why so many entities have been going on with these types of programs, capital money is just dried out, I mean, there just isn't any more. Taxes are high to begin with. I mean, so you don't wanna keep raising taxes for things. If there's a way you could utilize money that's already in your budget, your utility budget, you guys fund that every year, obviously. And you have to, I'm sure, a lot of times you put like a little inflation on it too. Every year it goes up three percent or five percent. We will get our, the way these projects are funded are for monies that are already in your budgets, bottom line. Now, the capital side of it, if you do that avoided capital cost, that's a little bit different. You do have to allot that, but instead of coming up with it all once, you do it over a period of time, okay? And by the way, there was a question before, how, who, who up-fronts the money, okay? Take, for example, the city of Greensburg. Now, they use a bond, they did not use a tax exempt lease. But we did, over a twenty-year period, about a million-five in improvements for the city of Greensburg. We did lighting improvements, we did city hall boiler replacement, we did circulation pumps, we did a cooling tower, we did some stuff at Nevin Arena. So, there was a whole list of items that we did for the project. That million-four, instead of the city having to come up with that, they basically funded it through a bond. And then our savings are used over the twenty years to pay off that bond. If bond's cheap, if the money's cheaper, we don't have any preference, I mean, how you pay for it. We've got a tax exempt municipal lease for a school district in Beaver County, New Brighton area schools. Four months ago, it's three-point-oh-five percent. So, they chose to go with the tax exempt municipal lease as opposed to a bond. Whatever makes most sense, we'll do. But the city of Latrobe would enter into a contract with us, with the ESCO, to do the engineering, to construct the project, and then improve out the savings over the long haul. There'd also be another contract, like we had talked about before, a lease or a bond, that would be set in place, that would be tied into the guaranteed energy savings agreement, to basically show that the savings are gonna pay for that debt service over whatever term you guys, you guys would choose.
So, we still have to take that a loan?
A lease or a loan, yes.
Is that interest-free?
No, the, the tax exempt lease. Well, the only way would be, there are some state grant money. If there's any grant money that could be available to fund this, we would assist in getting that for you. But most entities, you do have to take out a tax exempt lease or some sort of bond, three percent money, whatever it is.
And if we already have a bond, would we have to redo that one, or would it be a separate bond?
Could be either or. I mean, if that bond is coming up on due and you could refinance it, no.
We did it like last year.
Okay, you guys are right.
Yeah.
You, you referenced a study, analysis already was done. The, I read the analysis, pretty good, pretty in-depth. Would that help reduce the cost of your engineering study? And it seems to be pretty, pretty well talked about.
Yeah, we would use the information that was provided by the SPC.
Exactly, twenty thirteen.
Yeah, now, this was our response, you guys put out an RFP, I think it was in February. The responses were due in April. So, we responded with our, with our documentation, everything in here. I believe we did say, I'll check to see exactly what we were gonna charge for an investment-grade audit. Do you remember that, buddy?
No.
So, we have your RFP?
Yes.
And is it still valid?
Yes.
What happens if the audit reveals no potential savings, do we stop to pay for it?
No. If, if we do the audit and there is a project, a viable project that fits within the legislation guidelines, and we turn you over, turn over to you the full engineering audit, and you guys say, "Well, thanks, we don't wanna do anything," we will bill you for that amount. I think at Greensburg, I think the cost down there was fifteen thousand dollars to do the audit. They never had to pay that. It got rolled into the overall project cost, which had to be funded by savings because we ended up doing the project there. But, I will find exactly where that fee amount is. I thought we put it in here somewhere, but it's-
You can get back to him on that.
Yes. Okay. I, I know I'm right up against it. The one thing, when this, when this RFP came out, and it was before Wayne's, before Wayne was here, first question I asked Jared, and I think I asked Farb too, the same question, are there things related in here that are not pertaining to energy? And I was like, "Why are they in the RFP?" I mean, there's janitorial services, there's maintenance services, there are disposal and waste. I mean, you're looking for an energy project. That's all we do is energy. If these prices aren't good, you don't have to go with us, but we're gonna give you something that you could at least compare to. And by the way, your contract, I believe, is up January of sixteen. If these prices are good for you, you guys could ink that now and it'll be retroactive till sixteen, whenever, we'll hold those prices for then. But, my thought, when I, we responded to the way the RFP was set out, to those questions, we said, "Why in the world are you including all of that stuff in this RFP? It should be about energy." I mean, at the end of the day, you want somebody that's gonna come in and help you with that overall energy strategy, not only to save money, but to invest in your building smartly. And I think we're the right company for that, 'cause that's all we do, energy, anything energy-related. Somebody said, "We wanna look at solar panels," or "When?" We can price that up for you, it might not be cost-effective, but we can price that up for you and at least show you what the, what financial-
Would the city be required to switch to you as your, their energy provider if they gave you an ESCO, ESCO contract?
Yeah. None of the other related tools we do, demand response, renewables, selling power, selling gas, none of that has to go through Constellation. The only thing, this, the only thing this RFP is for is for what I do, energy efficiency. That's looking at the buildings, looking at the facilities that make them more energy-efficient, and structuring the program through act of, you know. If we're not the lowest, you don't have to go with us on the other side.
Any questions?
Yeah, I apologize for-
You're fine, you're fine, we asked you questions, it's free off, game. Closing, closing argument?
No, that's, I mean, that's really it, I just, I always say, "Hey, it's about energy. We can give you full energy strategy." We did it for other customers right in your backyard here. So, if you're looking for references, we can tell you how many guys we sold power to. I mean, it's probably a hundred thousand accounts, if not more. But, energy efficiency projects, there's probably five right in this corridor that we've just done. So, they're all satisfied.
How, how long ago, the ones, if you can recall, Westmoreland County? When did they begin their projects, a year, two years, three years?
City of Greensburg was just last year. We just finished construction like six months ago. Municipal Authority of Westmoreland County signed with us last year, we're still in construction, that was a larger project. Westmoreland County was two thousand and eleven. And then, the Housing Authority, Westmoreland County, I think we did two phases there. One was in oh-eight, and one was in eleven, I believe.
So, this goes back to two thousand eight, two thousand seven?
Oh, yeah, the legislation's been out there for twenty years. It's been amended several times. It's not, there's ebbs and flows. When there's money available, it kinda goes away. When money's tight, it comes back out. So, yeah, I just ask you, give us, if you can give us consideration for this, we'd be, we have offices in Green Tree. I'm somewhat local, I'm Westmoreland County, up in Dunlop, Export I live. But we have, we have project managers, engineers, auditors, all out of the Pittsburgh office. That's how we engineer all these other projects.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I'll get back to Wayne on those costs and I'll call you on those other.
Okay, gentlemen, you're up.
Thank you, this is Mary, thank you, council. My name's Eric Patrassio, I'm with ABM. This is Richard Phelps, he's the gentleman manager for Westmoreland County ABM. We have Dan Dobics, our vice president of Business Energy Solutions, Refilling Energy Solutions. And then Tim Schultheis, which is actually, Schultheis Electric, our local sister company here. So, the reason we're here this evening is we're here to respond to the RFQ that was put out in May for the ESCO program. Appreciate the opportunity, sorry about getting everything set up. I drew a ball in the dust. And we're here to share with you what we found throughout our presentation. We're here to share with you what we found, and actually, what we found is the opportunity you have here at Latrobe extends far greater than just energy. We found that you have the opportunity within your operating budget, as we see it, to do more than just energy. So, there's money there to do some of the key initiatives that you guys have. I'm gonna talk a little bit about our core competency, ABM, what we do, who we are. Talk about some of the key initiatives that we found that the city has. Richard's gonna build you the fiscal potential. And then we're gonna talk a little about why we're the provider of choice. Why we're the provider that's going to help you achieve the goals that you have here within the city for your infrastructure. So, when you look at ABM, ABM is a facility company. We maintain, renovate, and operate facilities. We do three billion square feet of facility space a day. In fact, we saved our customers three million dollars last year in energy savings alone. We operate over five-hundred thousand mechanical systems. And last year, we helped our clients generate one-point-five billion dollars in revenue. Every single penny was counted for. So, that's some of the things that we do. We do a lot of different things for a lot of different people, but we do bring a lot of acumen to the table. Not all of our clients do all those things, but they do some of those things. And that's how we help them as far as their operating budgets. Through the due diligence that we spent in the city, I've been here, I'm sure somebody's seen me at the meetings before. I've come here for a little bit over a year. And reading the Delta study and talking with the administration, you know, we recognize that, that, you know, increased revenues are important to the city right now. You guys have done some of that, some increasing some of your revenues. We also recognize that, you know, improving your fund balance is important to the city as well. We know that. We know that you have a depleted fund balance and you need to build back up, or you'd like to build back up. We also know that you're a progressive community, you actually outsource non-core services. Also, there's a lack of available capital that you have, by looking at some of the budgetary information that we can find online. Now, those are the initiatives that we found in the time that we've been looking at the city. I would ask, is there any other initiatives that I haven't really addressed on as far as financial initiatives? No? Okay. So, how ABM helps and how we're the provider of choices is because when we look around this pie chart here, you look at all these operating expenses within your facilities, and you see energy is a, is a key aspect. If I look at the energy as per, as compared to your budget, it only amounts to about five percent of your total budget is energy. So, if I could save you twenty percent, that would only be one percent of your total budget that I would be able to save you. When there's all these other operating areas that we can help drive cost out of your budget. Now, I don't know what they are, but I know that we have the acumen to help you do that. The way that we work is, as the building solutions team, we have all these other expert, all these other individuals' expertise that we drive through these projects and we help our clients with. Like I mentioned, I don't know exactly what your opportunity would be, but that's how we help our clients in, in funding these programs. And actually, what Richard's gonna show you is, is how one of these programs is potentially built financially, so.
What I'll take you to is a tool that we call our capital generation tool, our fiscal potential tool. And we'll start off with really the utility data. While we look at a number of different funding sources, utilities typically is one of the, the starting point, or the building blocks of which we'll look at. And then looking at your facilities, granted, the information may be a little bit old specifically in terms of your utility budget, because we pulled the information from the, the Delta study from two thousand and eleven. But, two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars is what you spend from two thousand and eleven on utility expenditures. With a per-square-footage of about two-hundred thousand square feet, that would make your cost per square foot about a dollar thirty-one. Benchmarking facilities of these type, based upon whom we've worked with in the past, you're looking at, granted, some facilities are gonna be a little bit more costly to operate than others. But, if we set a benchmark of about a dollar a square foot, that would represent about sixty-two thousand dollars a year in savings, or twenty-four percent compared to your baseline information. Where this, where this information carries forward to is what we call a cash flow. And I'm gonna shrink this down a little bit, to make it a little bit easier to follow. And there's a lot of information in here, and I'm gonna take you through it very slowly. So, in the term year, column A here, you have your term year. Most organizations we see out there in the public sector implement about a fifteen-year program. You can actually go longer, but I certainly wouldn't suggest financing anything beyond the usual life of the asset. So, over a fifteen-year term, that's your, your term. Column B is that sixty-two thousand dollars in energy savings, okay? If that was escalated at three percent over a fifteen-year period, that would generate one-point-one million dollars in funding for you to address your infrastructural needs, capitalizing that fifteen-year in savings, fifteen-year utility savings. This guaranteed energy savings, this is essentially all that we're utilizing as a funding source, so everything is accounted for here. And we're utilizing all of that funding for construction. So, at a three percent interest rate, the net present value in today's dollars is eight-hundred-and-forty-two thousand. So, if we can drive sixty-two thousand dollars in energy savings for you over a fifteen-year period, we can help you generate and address eight-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars in the capital improvements today. And the way these programs work is they're backed by a three-tiered guarantee. One of the most common things that we hear of in terms of construction projects are change orders, right? No one can stand a change order whenever they occur. Then these programs, they are firm fixed-price programs, that's the first guarantee. The second guarantee is in the form of when construction is complete, the systems have to work as designed. Because if they don't, the third guarantee in the form of those annual utility savings, if the systems don't work as designed, you're not going to see those savings, and then we have to write you a check to make you whole. And the way these programs work are whatever we can generate in savings has to be, essentially, your, your costs associated with these programs cannot be greater than or exceed whatever your savings. So, if you look at, from the blue, here is everything from a funding source. The white is everything from a program cost. So, you can see if you took out a note for eight-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, at a three percent fixed interest rate, here's your debt service payment over that term. It's escalating based upon the savings escalating over that timeframe as well. Anti-performance services. And the key practices, whatever your total program cost, sixty-two-three-seventy-two, has to be less than or equal to your total savings. Makes sense? So, on an annual basis, it has to pay for itself. This is again, just looking at one potential funding source. And as Eric mentioned, we've got that tremendous diversity of expertise that now comes into play that we can help you generate either additional revenues or drive further costs out of your operating profile. So, what some of our clients do is they utilize some of those expertise, whether it's custodial, janitorial, maintenance, parking, whatever it may be. And let's just say, we were able to, and this number would be very low, ten thousand dollars in, in savings by driving that out, utilizing our expertise in those spaces, help drive costs out of your profile. You then have the choice to include that as a funding source and to fund your projects, or to use that as general fund relief, okay? So, that number that I shared with you over here in this cash flow, that eight-fourty-two-nine-thirty, is the same number that exists here, okay? And, or the key element of general fund relief. Now, if I were to take this out, just to show you, the three-thousand-one-hundred-and-nineteen dollars, that's the total general fund relief over that term, 'cause you're using everything to address infrastructural needs. But if we can drive ten thousand dollars out, you now have the option. In this example, you're not using any of it to fund a project. You're using this as annual general fund relief. So, over that fifteen-year period, you've addressed nine, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in infrastructural needs right from day one. But over that same fifteen-year period, we've also given back to the, to the city, one-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars that you would have spent over that fifteen-year period. So, it's essentially ten thousand dollars a year. Now, we can look at maintenance reallocation, okay? By replacing some of these old assets, the expectation would be, you're not gonna be spending some of those old, those repair dollars on those old assets anymore, 'cause it's a new, new, essentially, asset that you have within your facility. It's essentially the same analysis each one of us does with a car. When that car payment, or the cost of a car payment is less than what you spend on repairs and maintenance, most people make that switch to that new car. So, if we could drive ten thousand dollars just in that example, right? If I were to, now you're up to eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars still in that same project, but now we've driven back three-hundred thousand dollars in general fund relief over that fifteen-year period, or essentially twenty thousand dollars a year back to you, you spend those dollars whatever way you see fit. In some cases, some of our clients have asked us, and it's essentially gone into public-private partnerships, where we take essentially control of the parking garages and so forth, and then lease the space- lease the space and it provides a cash infusion into them. That's an option. If it was $100,000, now you can generate additional funding. And these are examples where we're not increasing the size of the project scope, this is just money that's going back to you. But to give you some perspective, what if all of that was used to fund a project? You've gone from what was once an $850,000 project to now a $2.2 million project, which is funded through dollars, you either additional revenue that we're able to help you generate or dollars that, besides energy, other funding sources within your current operating profile that help you expand the scope of your project and address more of your infrastructural needs.
And how do you get paid for your services over the course of the years?
We get paid essentially, if this was your project, if yours was a $2.2 million project, our job in this is to go and execute your vision. So we design, engineer, procure, project manage, and commission the entire project. We go and do all that work, and we guarantee those savings to you on an annual basis. So you would have paid us essentially upfront $2.2 million to go do this work, and we guarantee the savings to exist to pay for that debt service on an annual basis. If that debt service doesn't exist, or if those savings don't exist, then we have to write you a check to make you whole on an annual basis.
So basically, you go--
Obviously, you don't do that too much or you wouldn't be in business. So how do you, again, how do you get paid for this?
We get paid upfront to do all this work and then our job--
Richard, if I could, you have to think of us as a design-built contractor. So, we are going to build the infrastructure for you and you're going to, you would pay us to build that solution for you. So we make money by being a contractor, mechanical contractor, and implementing all of this work for you. That's how we get paid.
So we have to have capital expense to pay to come up with the money or how do we come up with that money?
Is that the other figure?
No. The way it works is the energy savings and other funding sources that ABM is able to determine and guarantee for you, that backs alone. So you would go out and borrow, fund an escrow account like you would any other construction project. You pay us from that escrow account, and so you don't have any capital expenditure associated with it. It comes out of the escrow account and then you pay a bank or a loan or it's basically a lease. You pay that over the next 15 years based on how much funding we can guarantee and associate with the program.
Just so everybody's clear, we just had to float a bond two years ago for our parking garage.
On a design bill.
On a design bill that we're now having trouble getting. We're not, we're struggling with because we've got a $1 million R cap grant. And in order to get the $1 million R cap money back, we have to satisfy the requirements of the grant. Now we're going to have to hire an engineering firm to get the data that we needed. But the design bill thing doesn't bother me as much as, there you are. I told you--
I didn't think you were going to--
I didn't think you were going to--
Well, I want to speak with the other gentleman.
All right. So, I mean, honestly, this stuff sounds great. And I said to the other gentleman too, that it sounds too good to be true, but the real challenge for us is we can't float another $2 million bond.
That's the advantage, you don't have to do that.
Where are we getting the money from?
It's a lease that comes from the savings that we generate. It's not a bond. It's not, it's a different type of debt than a bond. Bonds are done through taxpayer burden.
But we have to pay you upfront, right?
No.
Sort of.
We don't have to sign any paperwork?
You have to. Yeah.
We can just do it over a beer then?
You're going to stop the money, right?
What happens is, again, in this scenario, we are going to guarantee the savings that are coming out of your operational budget. We're going to identify what those savings are. It's a 15-year program. For each year of the 15 years, we have to measure the performance level of what we have achieved in savings. So you're going to use those savings to make the payments on a loan. Let's look, take--
How do you--
Take that a little seriously.
Yeah, still got to take a loan out, but it's not a bond. It's an operating lease.
Still have to take out a loan.
Yes, you do.
A loan is an obligation. You can call it whatever name you want.
Right, right, right.
Yep, still an obligation.
The bonds are at a interest rate.
Yeah, so how do we guarantee the savings? It's an important question and it's one we get a lot. When we start the program, the next step of this, you select ABM to do this for you, we'll go through and we establish your operating costs. What is my baseline in every one of the buildings we look at? What does it cost us to operate those buildings a day? Based on your energy costs, the hours of operation, and what it takes you to maintain that building. We establish that benchmark. And then we say, if we put all brand-new equipment in that building, lighting, control systems, I know you have some pneumatic control problems and some other heating and cooling equipment, if we put all brand-new, very efficient equipment in there, we measure the consumption of all of that equipment after it's installed, and that differential is where we have to achieve savings.
I think I--
So it's very methodical on the way that we do that. We put what we call data loggers. We're going to measure equipment runtimes and consumptions for a period of about six months. So we can clearly come back to and say, here's exactly the way each one piece of your equipment is operated and running.
We should see though--
Heating and cooling.
If we paid $10,000 a month in electricity and you put some energy star-efficient appliance, store appliances in here, we should see $8,000 a month--
Correct.
--in electricity.
And that $2,000--
Always goes to pay the loan.
That's correct.
Buy the equipment to get you down to $8,000.
Correct.
And if we don't see that, our electricity bill stays at $10,000.
And you pay us the difference.
That's right. Right, you're telling-- We have to, by statute. By statute in the contract that we write says that we have to keep you whole. Because otherwise, you'd be doing all this based on taxpayer burden. What we're trying to do is help you spend the money you already have in your budget, spend it a little bit differently or as a result of it. Think of the utility company as an example.
So my question is, how do you measure? How do you make your measurement every month to tell you whether we're saving money or not? What do you use to measure? Electric bill?
Bill. Well, no, we take meters and devices that will measure like this light, for example.
Your devices that you put on our stuff, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't manufacture the devices, but yes, there are devices that will actually measure the consumption that's built for these lights before construction and then we measure it after construction. So we can tell you on lighting, for example, immediately.
So, because it changes in heater, you're saying we show an energy saving, but what if it didn't change in the bill? In the electric bill?
Well, it has to because the bill--
What if it doesn't?
Well, then your electric company is taking advantage of you because the meter--
So what if that's the case? What if it doesn't? Now, you guys don't pay us, so we got to go fight the electric company?
No, we can actually put devices on the meter that reconciles what the meter says and what your devices are consuming. We can help you reconcile that. In fact, in a lot of cases, one of the clients I have, so, my role is national. I deal with your peers all over the country. We have a client right now in North Carolina that we put devices in, and if the building is supposed to shut down, let's say this room is supposed to sit down at 10 o'clock tonight, but everybody leaves, walks out of the building, and they leave these lights on. Somebody forgets to shut them off. The system will monitor that and make sure that the lights go off. They will tell you the next day, hey, by the way, your building is supposed to operate this way and it didn't operate that way, make sure we turn the lights off tomorrow. Make sure we turn the heating and cooling system off. It'll track all of that stuff. And it makes sure that it translates in your utility bill. I mean, your meter is connected to the load, so if the lights consume less energy, it's immediately adapted in the utility, in the meter, electric meter.
Okay, you look at our equipment and you recommend new equipment that's to be put in, paid by the savings. Question, who maintains the equipment thereafter? And do you maintain it? Do you maintain it?
We can maintain it. We can help you write a spec so that you understand how to maintain it. We can do that in any magnitude--
So we're not locked into one maintenance provider?
No, you're not.
Not only that, the non-proprietary system so that you're not stuck working with one service provider because--
Most clients like us to maintain it because they want to come back to one source and say, you said it was going to be maintained, you said it was going to perform a certain level, and we can factor all of those costs into this so that you know that all costs associated with the program are covered by savings.
Including if the new equipment breaks down?
Yes. I mean, we can give you a 15-year performance guarantee on every piece of HVAC equipment you install so that if it ever breaks, it doesn't cost you another dime. Most clients won't do that. It can get expensive, but we can start that program typically in year five. We'll buy an extended--
A paper.
Yeah, right. So what we would typically do is for the first five years, go and still get warranty from the manufacturers and then start at a maintenance coverage beginning year six. It's usually a cost advantage to you.
Did you ever get your question answered as how to get paid? Because I'm still struggling with where that money comes from.
I haven't heard the answer yet.
It's right here. See this, you're going to write us a contract to do 2.2--
Or write you a check.
Here's the question. That's a 2.8?
2.2.
It's engineering design.
Right.
So-- The money comes out of the grant, comes out of the finance.
So of that 2.8 million dollars, 2.6 of that goes to labor and materials and whatnot, and 2 million goes to you. It's essentially--
200,000. No. You would write a contract to us for 2.2 million dollars. You would take a loan for that 2.2 million dollars, you deposit that in escrow like every other construction project you've done in the city. And then as we complete construction, you pay us. You then have to repay the loan to the bank, to whoever the leaseholder is.
So your fees are in that 2.2 million?
That is correct.
So you negotiated, you know, with your electrical company a certain amount and that 2.2 million dollars already has built in your costs. That's what I thought, but I just wanted somebody to say it.
There's no extra on top of that. So then, as soon as the loan starts, which is typically, depending on your timing, six months to a year after construction's complete, you will use the savings that are drained and drained each year to make that payment. So you have to, it's a little bit complicated, but you have to kind of separate the loan and what goes in the escrow account and how you pay us and then how you repay the loan.
I understand and I appreciate, and in the interest of fairness, I'm not going to give you guys any more than 15 minutes because that's, you know, but, and I appreciate Eric and his, I think it's a good program. It sounds like a good idea. All I can tell you is, we are very leveraged right now financially, and I think with this bond that we just floated, what, last year, year and a half ago? Something like that? Has it been a couple of years already? It's a 15-year bond or something? Yeah, we've made, yeah, so I just don't know that this council has the stomach for taking out another loan of any kind. I understand that it will pay itself back, but it's still liability that we have to, we just have to talk through it and think about it. Wayne, what do you think? Ray?
I think you need to sit down and talk about it. I understand what they're saying and I understand your concern about putting more money out. Obviously, that's a big issue.
On the other hand--
On the other hand, you can save money.
We know we have a boiler that's--
Right.
Really, 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 really old. So we're going to be--
I think--
We take the loan to a minimum, not 2.2.
Yeah.
That's a question I have. A question I have. We had an analysis done in 2013, and it was a good analysis. It kind of targeted what was the main issues relating to energy, the boiler, and air conditioning, and some other issues within the building's structure itself. You know, will that be taken into account, that research? Because, you know, there's the point revenged with it. You know, these gentlemen did a good job and I think it would help narrow the scope of what you're going to consider if you are selected based on this line of story to do.
We would use it as a guide.
Yeah, I mean--
I mean, I wouldn't want, that's information I wish I had right now, to be quite honest. I wish I had in front of me.
That's fine, I just read it about a week ago.
Richard, if you could go back and show them the energy potential of the program is today, you know, looking at the needs that you have inside your building. I think what you, Richard, what we're trying to show you is, we do a lot more than just energy, but energy's a major component.
If you just use energy as a component, as the funding source, it would be about $850,000 just based off benchmarking right now. What we're saying is that by just looking at energy, you're missing a lot of other potential funding sources that you decide whether to include or not include in your project. So by just limiting yourself to energy, there's other funding sources that depending upon your needs and what your goals and objectives are, can potentially help you do that if that is infrastructural needs. Or, if you'd like that to be general fund relief, you can use that as general fund relief. Those aren't decisions that we make on behalf of our clients. We present the information and allow you to make an informed decision based upon what your goals and objectives are.
I mean, I think with the age of this building and the lack of attention that's been paid to it over the years, I'm sure there's savings. The question is--
Where do your labor savings come from? Because we have to remember, we deal with collective bargaining, so I'm not sure how you propose 10% labor savings.
You guys outsource a lot of non-core functions, correct? Some are sanitation perspective, IT perspective, janitorial perspective. If you look at the core competencies, security, parking, those are areas that are core functions of us that if there are ways to drive savings out of your current operating costs, that we would bring that to the table and then allow you to decide to incorporate--
So in other words, not using Company A as our janitorial service, you would say use Company B because we'll save $1,000 a month using Company B.
Correct.
Because you negotiated a contract with Company B.
Or it could be because we have individual employees who actually perform those services themselves that it's able to, we can drive costs up because that is one of our core functions of what we do in terms of custodial and security, janitorial, and all those things.
I might advise a, I like the thought of starting narrow in scope, defining what your real opportunity is. And then from there, see where you expand. You know, I think you do, based on the buildings that we've been in, see some core HVAC-related stuff that you could do pretty easily and attack some of that stuff. And then look if you want to go beyond that. Do we go to, you know, some of your traffic lights, like the peers are on LED in order to crosswalk stuff? Generally, that's about an 85 to 90% reduction in utility costs by doing those. Phenomenal payback. And you have some other things I think you could do that would be quite easy. Whether you go beyond that, I think you could make an informed decision on how far you want to go.
Do we have your completed RFQ?
Yeah.
With numbers on it, separated by--
No, we were not asked to do that at this point. That would be the next step. We would do that full aggressive investment, we call an investment grade audit as part of the next step.
You have a list of communities that you have engaged you. Hopefully, some in our area, if there are that we--
I think Richard's got some to show.
I have a number of learning recommendations, which I'll pass out to you in a second, as well as references that you can reach out to and talk with them. Mount Lebanon, this example, City of Washington, Brooklyn Borough--
Okay, I'm going to, you're well over your time limit, but I'm going to let you have two more minutes to give me your closing remark.
It's a list.
I feel like a judge.
So from our perspective, you know, why ABM? And I understand that you have two organizations from which to select between. Hopefully, what we've shared with you today, what we've established is really the fact that by looking at it from an energy perspective while looking at it from, you know, looking at all potential funding sources, can significantly impact your goals and objectives by addressing additional infrastructural needs or general fund relief. And from a facility expertise perspective, you know, it's an important characteristic of anyone that you select because these are your facilities and you have to have an understanding of facilities to help drive those costs up. In addition to that, public finance acumen is incredibly important in these programs because you want to be able to understand where all sources of funding are coming from. Because if you're not spending it, we can't save it. And in order to make a measurable, you need to have really both qualities to make a measurable impact upon what it is you're trying to do and whether that is infrastructural needs or general fund relief at that point. It may make sense to start off, look narrow, and then expand from there. But having that level of expertise will carry you and give you many more decision points from which you can decide how you'd like the city to emerge.
Thank you very much for your time--
Thank you.
--and energy and effort. Appreciate it.
Right here.
I'll give those to Wayne. Anybody have anything else? Okay, seeing a couple of--